SWAT personnel goes to seventeen members of the police department, SWAT team, and six members of the fire department, who are tactical emergency medical support members of the team. And you can see many of them are here today. I told them, don't bring any weapons, or anything that makes a lot of noise, or anything like that. They did offer maybe a demonstration at the beginning of the meeting, but we'll save that for some other time. The recognition for this award came from an incident that occurred on a very cold night, similar to tonight. It was in December. It began with a call for an armed, deranged man who took two young girls hostage. And the incident ended many hours later with the girls safe and the suspect unharmed, in custody. During the incident, our team was instrumental in the successful conclusion through their training and the deployment of chemical munitions after the suspect used a shotgun to get their attention. According to the award, their unified and strategically deployed actions, their trust in their training, their reliance on each other, and their unity of resolve represents a sound understanding of the principles of teamwork and reflects a level of performance under tremendously stressful and comfortable conditions, equal to the highest standards of professionalism expected from officers assigned in the fields of special weapons and tactics. And I'd like to present this award to the group, and in particular, the commander of the team, Captain William Tyler.
Thank you.
Any comments, Captain? Any comments, Tyler? Any comments?
Comments?
Yeah, I graduated with you.
You just wanted to hear me speak, didn't you?
I graduated with you. I've never known you to be a loss for words.
Well, I just said, all the team members couldn't make it today. Some are working and some unavailable, but this is many years in the making. Guys put a lot of hours in every year to be successful. You're glad that on game day like this, it actually works well, and it did. So, we're pleased and honored. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think I share the sentiments of all the councilors when we say, job well done, and we're very proud of the job that you do each and every day. And I think the citizens are very proud of that as well, so keep up the good work. Item four, public hearings.
A resolution authorizing an exception to the architectural review and landscape code for the property located at 1877 Madison Road. The plan commission recommended approval six zero.
Thank you. Mrs. Christensen, please.
Building Systems General Corp. has filed this exception to the architectural review and landscape code to allow the exterior walls, on the addition they're proposing to an existing warehouse building, to be more than 25 percent metal. The applicant's been hired by Woodmans to construct a 32,639 square foot addition to an existing Woodman's warehouse. The preliminary site plan, landscape plan, and proposed exterior elevations were attached to the report. The proposed addition will occupy spaces currently used as an off-street parking area and trailer loading, unloading, and storage area. As shown on the preliminary site plan, the loading docks will be relocated from the west Burton Street side of the existing warehouse to the south Madison Road side of the expanded warehouse. The proposed addition will be set further back from Madison Road than the existing warehouse, which will avoid the creation of a long imposing building wall along an entire block of Madison Road. The applicant has proposed additional landscaping to screen the loading docks, and the property will need to comply with the landscape code. The proposed south facade consists of 42 percent metal wall panels, with the remainder consisting of precast concrete wall panels and translucent wall panels. And then the proposed west and north facades consist of 100 percent metal wall panels. Tonight handed out to you was an elevation. The applicant is also here with some drawings. Plan Commission did hold a public hearing at its last meeting and did recommend approval, subject to the conditions which are listed in the resolution, which is that prior to beginning construction, the applicant shall submit site architectural and building plans and obtain a certificate of zoning compliance, an architectural review certificate, and a building permit. The dumpsters and recycling containers for the gas station building shall be enclosed in accordance with the architectural review and landscape code as part of the project. And then just our standard major conditions coming back through this process, and staff being able to approve minor changes administratively. And the applicant is here if you have any questions, because I know councillor DeForest had wanted them here for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. We've heard the staff presentation. Now, we'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item four A? So, please step forward, state your name and address at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on item four A? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item four A, the CD? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion at this time.
Motion by Jones.
Motion by Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deitch, councillor DeForest.
I do have a question, excuse me, if the architect would be willing to answer my question about the facade that's facing Burton Street. And I think that my concern actually is underscored by the rendering that we've been provided, where there's several tall, mature trees located in front of the wall to help break up the wall. And I'm concerned that there's nothing in the design to help break up that expanse of wall. Would you be open to considering some faux windows, or something to break up just that expanse of wall that will be on the residential side of the street there?
And before you answer that, I'm asking him to come to the mic and state his name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Jim Arneson from Building Systems. The reason we didn't put anything in there is because on the other side of that wall is a 5,000 square foot cooler. That's the full height of the building. So, just from a functionality standpoint, you know, on the other side of the building, we added a lot of translucent wall panels, so we can do some daylighting to reduce the amount of energy we consume. But because that whole end is a cooler, we didn't choose to put anything else in there to gain any real benefit from. I guess...
If I could follow up, I understand from a functionality point of view, that might make sense, but that side is facing residential side. And so, my concern is that residentially and on that street, as you're traveling, you're just going to see an expanse of metal wall. So, just in terms of aesthetic design for that residential neighborhood, I'm concerned. Is there a reason why you couldn't put faux windows, or something else to break up that expanse of metal wall?
No, we just, at this point, chose not to.
And how long is the length of that wall?
I don't have the dimensions off the top of my head. You know, we did stagger that wall to try and, you know, minimize it, so it isn't just one big surface area back there.
I see that and appreciate that. So, maybe my question for Ms. Christensen is, can we incorporate that as part of our requirements for approval?
I mean, you can. As for whether, I mean, I don't know if Woodmans is prepared to do it as a condition, but that portion of the building, they're expanding off the end, and it actually is across from, it's not actually across from the neighborhood, it's across from where there's some existing warehouse buildings. If you look at the location and zoning map, this building will come this way, and that facade actually faces two warehouse buildings, many storage buildings.
The storage.
It doesn't face residential until the residential's over here. And they are proposing landscaping, if you look at the landscape plan, which is why we didn't recommend faux windows. There are some plantings right here and right along here.
How tall are those plantings required to be?
I do not know off the top of my head, usually six feet. If they're evergreens, otherwise they're two-inch caliber trees. I mean, I don't know if they're existing. Are those existing trees, do you know, or?
There are a couple that are existing, the two corner trees, but the ones in the middle are not.
The reason why I'm concerned partly is because we've had design aesthetic conditions for industrial buildings in other neighborhoods, but yet it seems like when we've come to this neighborhood, we're saying that it's okay to let it go. And I just, I'm concerned about consistency, too.
When have we done the faux windows where we've, on industrial buildings? The only faux windows I remember were on garages, on multifamily buildings. I mean, that's not an industrial use. We haven't usually required faux windows on the side of industrial buildings.
So, are these design standards consistent with Milwaukee Road, for example?
We don't have industrial buildings on Milwaukee Road. But there are no design standards on Milwaukee Road that require the faux windows.
Okay, I am familiar, for example, with Central Christian Church. They wanted to put up, as part of their addition, metal, they wanted to use metal walls, and we would not allow that.
They use metal walls. Their walls are metal, where the Kid Works building is. And a lot of those panels are all metal.
Okay.
They're an architectural metal panel, but they are metal. I mean, you, the council can require, put a condition to require faux windows in the design on Burton Street, if the council so desires.
Is that all, councillor DeForest, right now?
Yes, that is all for now.
Okay. Councillor Noonam?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you very much for coming by tonight. We're very glad that you guys have decided to expand in Beloit, you know, one of our great business partners. I hope that you guys continue to have great success for a lot of years. This is obviously one of our main entry points into the city, so it makes a very big difference as far as perception of people pass through our city, and also, obviously, one of our main residential areas, so it does impact people's lives there as well. So, I do echo councillor DeForest's comments about the west side and the south side. I'm wondering if planting units, we don't have the exact numbers, are there, is this a point of meat code, or are we planning to exceed that in order to soften the impact of metal siding?
Well, we are exceeding the requirements for the property. The entire parcel is being treated, so the landscaping is being enhanced, well, as of last year, when we redid the parking lot, we did significant enhancing of the landscaping in the parking lot area. And our landscaping that we're doing here is significantly more than is there right now.
And with your planting units, where you, we have it in front of us, but I'm wondering if, when you are finalizing your design, will you be trying to minimize the impact of having the dock doors? Beloit currently does not have any restrictions for that, that's true, as I'm sure you experience many communities, you know, they have different restrictions to docking doors on streets like that. Will you be sensitive to that in trying to figure out your planting scheme to that?
That's what we have been trying, on the loading dock side, we have been trying to block that. We're trying to create a barrier so that people aren't looking at the semis, and that is been the focus of what we're trying to do on that elevation.
Back to councillor DeForest's point, if the siding, maybe consider maybe doing, I see there's like a red stripe that appears at the top, is there some other way that you might be able to break that up in some way, so it's not just one?
Well, actually, there is no stripe. It's just a shading line, just, but it's, because everything is intended to be the same color.
Would that be something that you would consider, though, doing something that would break it up and give it a little better look? Or, and/or, would you consider evaluating the landscaping? Again, I see that there's some there. Maybe that would be something that would break it up as well.
Well, our preference would be to accomplish it with landscaping and try to create that buffer. I mean, we, I don't know how well this, you know, this rendering that we have is going to represent the landscaping that's there, but our intent was to create, you know, a landscaping buffer, trying to use some evergreen-type, you know, trees to, so that it is softened on the look.
And, you know, we realize, you know, these are challenging economic times, and we want to make it to where, you know, you have success with your project. Other than just trying to minimize some of your build-out costs, is there any specific reason that you can't do a nicer facade other than aluminum siding?
Well, I guess that's a question for Woodmans, that, you know, they would have to, I would have to ask them how much more they want to do. Right now, this is what they've wanted to try and do to the property. And the feeling is that this is an improvement from what's currently there. The other advantage that we have with this is, it won't be the open semi-storage that's out there currently, which this will eliminate that factor.
And we're thankful for that. That's great. And we want them to be successful. That's good.
You done? Councillor Johns?
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I respect my fellow councillor's opinions, I appreciate what Woodmans is doing here, especially with the parking lot repairs that were done last year. The landscaping that has been and is being added, and I think it's great that they're busy enough to be expanding. I think any enhancements that we wanted to do with their current exterior should have been addressed when they opened the new building, however many years ago that was. And everything faced the outside roads at that time. I'm very excited to see the semis that are currently parked there have a place to go, and the fact that it is being moved away from the residences. So, I think that this is a great solution to an existing problem, so. Thank you.
Councillor DeForest?
I would just like to express, I certainly don't want to put any undue unreasonable hardship on Woodmans. I just feel very strongly that this is, as councillor Noonam has said, a major entranceway into Beloit. We've put so much emphasis on how Beloit looks from approaching, approaches in other parts of the city. I just think the west side deserves just as much consideration in terms of how our spaces look there. So, I do feel like the west side neighborhood there is being slighted a bit by making this exception. Thank you.
Councillor Noonam?
Thank you. I guess, for Ms. Christensen, do we know, I put the terminology wrong, but exactly the planting, number of planting units that they, or percentage of planting units that they are over the required number?
No, because we don't require some metal of a detailed landscape plan until they go through site plan review, which they don't do until you, they're not, they aren't doing until you make a decision on the exception. So, at this point, we don't have, we haven't done an evaluation of their landscape plan. They've just submitted a preliminary one, which doesn't have everything on it that we would normally get, so we don't know at this point.
Will that come back before us, final one?
No.
This is our only time at this.
This is the only thing that requires council action. Otherwise, everything else they want to do is permitted under the ordinance.
I guess I would ask you the same question. Do you know, in your design, how many percentage of planting units over what's required you're doing, or numbers, or something along those lines, something we can gauge it with?
I don't have the numbers with me. We did just get the drawings back. They're complete. We were actually planning on submitting this week, but...
And they look great. I guess, since this is our only shot at this, I guess I'm unfortunately blindly then, but I guess I'm going to make an amendment that the, for percentage of planting units over. And I don't know if anyone can help me with that at all, I'm guessing not. So, I, okay, I guess my, it'll be, I'd like to request that the number of planting units on the west side and the south side of this project exceed 140, 40 percent, 40 percent over, so 140 percent of the required planting, a minimum of 140 percent, 40 percent, however you want to write that.
Please.
On the south and west side.
Okay. Councillor Johns?
Sorry, I thought it was off.
Oh, you, you know everything? Okay, no comments. Anyone else?
One second.
Okay. There's an amendment to the original motion. All in favor, any discussion on that, any discussion?
Yes, councillor Van Bollberg. What, councillor Noonam, this will be, I guess, directed at you. What magic is there in 40 percent? Why not 30, or why not 50? Is there some threshold here that you're aware of that will make it a better project, or versus 30 percent, versus 70 percent? What, why 40?
I think councillor Van Bollberg first question, and my response would be that unfortunately, we don't have those numbers before us. This is our only opportunity to address this issue. And I would once again reiterate that this is a very important strategic property for the impression for our entire city coming in, and it affects the neighborhood. Without having actual numbers in front of me and just an abstract drawing, and with us just being expected to blindly make a decision, I came up with something that I thought seemed reasonable. But we'd be open to changing that if the councillors wanted to change that percentage up or down.
And the applicant does not believe there's enough green space to put 40 percent more. So, I mean, we are limited by the amount of space there is to put stuff. I mean, this is an existing developed site. And in order to maneuver the trucks on Madison, there has to be a certain amount of pavement area. And so, you're left with the green space, you know, the extra space you've got. And he does not believe you can fit 40 percent more. I don't know what you can fit, if you have a ballpark amount, but, I mean, we can work with them to beef up the landscaping and the space that's provided. I just can't help in terms of coming up with a number, because I don't know what that number would be.
And, right, that's what I was trying to ask, what that was. And I would be open to changing that, for sure. I just had to come up with something concrete to put down. So, if anyone can give us something more concrete that we can go with, I'd be happy to come up with a certain percentage, but I just don't know, based on this, what that could be.
Councillor Johns?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Christensen, do you, are you aware of us ever putting a landscaping restriction on an industrial property in the past?
As, I mean, as part of the, not an actual condition on the exception. The only one that I remember is the one that councillor Noonam did for the Alliance substation, but that wasn't an exception, it was a conditional use, I think. But that's the only one I recall. Normally, we've gone with the typical buffer requirements and the landscaping requirements of code.
Thank you.
But we don't get a lot of exceptions, so we...
Councillor Haynes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know, I mean, it seems to me that at some point, we just need to pass on to staff that we want a maximum amount of buffer and let them work out the details. I think that seems to me that if we tell you we want a maximum amount of buffer, you could probably work this out to where you used all the space. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, you could add a condition which says, that directs us to work with the applicant to provide the maximum amount of landscape materials on those two elevations. And we could just work with them to make that fit.
I think that seems reasonable to me, is that way we don't put a straight jacket on it, but we put the emphasis that the space needs to be filled. That'd be acceptable?
We have, right now, currently, we have an amendment on the table. I don't know if that would be procedurally an additional, an addition to the amendment, or do we need to do another amendment over and above the other one, which is over and above the original motion. But before we even get to that complicated, before we even get to that complicated matter, councillor DeForest, have a...
I would just like to remind my colleagues, there's a reason why this has come before us. It's because it's an exception to our existing architectural code. And that code is in place for a reason. And I am concerned that, again, this is a visually important piece of property and a very important part of the city. And I think it's no accident that we seem to not be considering that, and that it's on the west side, in a west-side neighborhood. And I'll just make that comment again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Johns?
I'm sorry. I do take a personal offense to that, that I wouldn't consider that this is on the west-side neighborhood. So, I just had to stick up for that. Sorry.
Okay, and here we are. Before we go down a road we don't really need to go down, we need to figure out, first of all, there is an amendment on the table, and offered by councillor Noonam, and I believe...
It's increasing the number of planting units on the south and west sides of the building by 140 percent of what is required by the architectural review and landscape code.
Okay, so that was the original amendment. Councillor Haynes offered up, in addition to that amendment. Is that something we can incorporate into that additional amendment, or do we need to go?
Councillor Haynes, is that something that you meant to be part of that amendment, or did you mean?
For discussion point, but if I, formal question, offer an amendment, or do we just go ahead and vote on his amendment, and then I'll...
I'm going to look to the city attorney for clarification.
Thank you. Well, I believe if councillor Noonam and, I believe, Mr. DeForest was his second, were receptive to a friendly amendment, we could amend the amendment offered. If not, you can vote on the amendment, and if there was a desire on somebody's part, another amendment could be put on the floor before the main motion were voted for, if that makes any sense.
That's sure.
Councillor Noonam, I'd like to amend this amendment.
So, basically, what we're saying is, if everyone is in, if councillor Noonam and councillor DeForest is in favor of councillor Haynes's friendly amendment, or addendum to their amendment, we can incorporate that all into one motion at that particular time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Although I think the nature of what I understood councillor Haynes's amendment would completely replace, I think, what councillor Noonam had offered. It wouldn't be 140 percent standard, it would be...
It would be staff, it would be to work with staff on coming up with a plan to fill in most of the space, buffer space, the maximum amount.
You could take councillor Noonam's amendment to say, increase the landscape units on the south and west elevation, as much as space allows, you know, or something like that. So, it would be minorly changing what he said.
Okay.
Well said.
Well said. And so, that could go under the same motion and second, if you guys are in agreement with that. Are you in agreement with that, yes or no?
Let's make sure the city...
That's the only thing I want to hear, yes or no?
You should make sure this...
Councillor DeForest, are you in agreement with that, with Mrs.?
Yes, I am.
All right, so now...
You should make sure your city clerk has it down.
And Rebecca, you have that. We're not going to have any discussion right now until we get this worked out, please. Thank you.
This is increasing the number of plantings on the south and west side of the building as space allows.
Maximum.
I think we should probably define that, I guess...
Yeah, maximum is, yeah, it's too wide. The wider thing, I think I'm comfortable with as space allowed, and I think staff knows the direction that where people are saying the maximum space allowed. I think...
And the reason Rebecca's saying that is because she's thinking in her own mind, if she would have had to take that condition and enforce it as a planner.
Right, which is an advantage of having an ex-planner here, so.
Yeah, that wouldn't work.
So, I guess I would, with that, are you comfortable, Mrs. Christensen, in understanding what they're looking for, provided this passes? Okay.
Yes.
Councillor DeForest?
Sorry, I just would like to emphasize that in this rendering, there are adult trees here for a purpose, to try to buffer, and so I would ask that those units be adult trees.
Well, they may not, you can't have all adult trees, because they, you have to space them apart, so you're not going to have all mature trees.
That's fine, as much as possible. Just as a staff directive, I'd like to ask for tall landscaping units, not bushes. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody, we all have it. Can you please repeat that back?
So, we have a motion in a second to add a condition that says the number of planting units on the south and west side of the building shall be increased as much as space allows.
Got it. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Passes five to two. Passes five to two. Am I done with that part? Am I done with that one? Okay.
Yes, you, the amendment passes five to...
So that replaces the, that replaces the original, right?
Correct.
Correct. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page here. Okay. So with that said, think we're ready to move on to the next item, are we?
I think you need to vote on the underlying resolution as well.
Okay. What he said. All those in favor of the underlying resolution, which was the original plus the amendment, which now becomes one motion for the entire picture? Are we all clear? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Passes six to one. Thank you. And I know we're done with that, but, so before we move on to the next item with the citizens' participation, just a word of caution, I understand everyone's passion for the city and I understand everyone's passion for what's going on in the city, but I would hope that we can let our opinions and our feelings be known without going down a road of it seems to be attacking. I want to make sure that we are very clear with that, that we run very professional, organized meetings. And I don't mind the disagreements because everyone could be, you could disagree without being disagreeable. When we walk away from the table, we still have to remind ourselves and be in that frame of mind. So I want us, I want to just throw out to the council that it's our right to disagree, but let's not go down that road to where it may seem as though we're starting to attack each other because of a feeling that we may have about a certain part of town or a certain project or something. Because I truly believe that everyone down here is looking out for the best for the entire city. And I think that's why we're all here. Yes, we need to address these issues as they come up, but I truly believe that as a council and as a president, I will speak for the entire council, that no one is trying to slight one side of town more so than the other. So I want to make sure that we are understanding that and we're all on the same page. So I would throw that out to the group as we move forward down the road. Okay? Thank you. Item five, citizens' participation. We've now come to a point on the agenda where citizens may come forward and speak. You may talk about anything that's not on the agenda. Council will not act on this. We would probably refer to the appropriate department. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the citizens' participation? If you would like to speak on the citizens' participation, please come down, state your name and address. And we usually allow people three minutes. We won't cut you off, but if we...
I'm totally new at this. Don't you take my hand?
Aye.
I'm Mark Rhodes. I live 850 Bluff Street. I am, as you can see, I work for Pizza Hut, part-time, dislocated worker. I just have a couple of concerns about a few things, you know, traffic lights and, and I just, I'm new at this, so this is my first meeting, coming to a meeting like this. And I probably could have called somebody else to find out. Anyway, the corner of Ran Roosevelt and Bluff Street, it would be the northeast corner. It's, we're on a hill, type of a hill. And I don't know how far vehicles are allowed to park to that corner. There's residents that live there. And, and, and it seems to me that they park quite close to that corner and we can't see at all. Barely can see around those cars to see, you know, to pull out. And I've been, I've been having problems with, you know, pulling out and then getting clipped almost, you know? And you've just got to be careful with that. But that's one thing in that corner. And there's, there's two traffic lights I would like to bring up, and that is St. Paul and State Street. And I'm wondering if, if at all possible, at like six-thirty, maybe seven o'clock, turn that to a flashing yellow. Because there's the light on Sherlin and then there's a light on Broad, which is quite close. All three of them are real close to each other. You know, time is money. You know? It seem like I get caught on that light all the time. And, and there, and there's no traffic. I mean, it's, it's just real dead right there. And that's just one, and there's another one on the Pleasant and Public. If that could go flashing yellow at a certain time in the evening. Those are my three issues and thank you very much.
Okay. And I see Dave Box is taking notes, so maybe he'll have a, talk to you before you go. Thank you, Dave. Thank you. Item six, it's a consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any council that would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items six A through six C. All those in favor of approval?
I think you need a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by DeForest, second by Bitch. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, passes. Seven zero. Thank you. Item seven, ordinances. There are none. Item eight, appointments. And we have a couple. All right. Appointment, the, I, Kevin Levy Dooley, elected president of the Beloit City Council, subject to confirmation by the Beloit City Council. Do hereby appoint the following citizens and members to the vacancies and terms indicated below. Said appointments being pursuant to nominations made by approved and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at a regular meeting held February fourteenth, twenty-eleven. For the municipal golf committee, we have Beth Davies, seven-twenty-one East Heart Road, replacing Marilyn Wallin as ex-official representative of the women's golf club. And I believe that's the only appointment that we have this evening. I would like to also announce the following vacancies. Appointment Review Committee has two vacancies for residents. The Board of Ethics have one vacancy for former city councilor and one vacancy for resident. Board of Review has two vacancies as an alternate for residents. Community Development Authority, one vacancy for resident. Disabled Parking Enforcement Assistant Council, four vacancies for residents with disabled plates. Equal Opportunities and Human Relations Commission, one vacancy for resident. Landmarks Commission, one vacancy for resident. Municipal Golf Committee, one vacancy for youth representative. Plant Commission, one vacancy for resident. Police and Fire Commission, one vacancy for resident. And Traffic Review Committee has one vacancy for resident. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion by Johns, second by Haynes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Item nine, council activities and upcoming events. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to personally congratulate our SWAT team. I'm so proud to have such an excellent police force in our city and most impressed by that team was nominated by their peers, by other SWAT teams around the state of Wisconsin. And I think there's no greater honor than being nominated by your own peers. So, again, I'd just like to say congratulations. I certainly wanted to thank also the volunteers of BIF who made it such a huge success. I enjoyed many films and enjoyed hosting a film myself this year and walked away with some stimulating ideas and challenged and so appreciate the way the community comes together and the way BIF unites us all as we come out to enjoy a great weekend of film. I am, I'm looking forward to attending the Greater Beloit Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner on March first. And if you're interested in attending that, certainly please contact our Chamber of Commerce and looking forward to networking with individuals there. And we'd like to thank our local chamber for the fantastic work they do in helping to promote business in the city of Beloit. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones.
Well, I'd like to congratulate the organizers of BIF also. It certainly was a great event. I saw more films this past weekend than I've seen in the last six months or more. And the downtown especially was just thriving and alive with the energy of all these people coming into town and enjoying themselves in our community. And of course, the giant snowman in the middle of downtown is quite an attraction and I'm sure that it will get quite a bit of attention. I also want to point out that one of our fellow counselors managed to make the front page of the newspaper as she was going around attending events at BIF. She managed, a camera somehow managed to find her. And so take a look at that on the front page of tonight's paper. Thank you.
Counselor Brandon Bogart.
Thank you. Congratulations to the BIF committees and sponsors and participants and volunteers. It was quite a weekend. I also got to a number of films and it was very impressive to see the way the community turns out. I also had the opportunity along with counselors Levy, DeForest, and Johns to attend a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the public housing improvement phase one this last week. And I couldn't help but note, a number of us have commented on and seen some of the bald eagles in the downtown area over the last several weeks. And as the ceremony was taking place, one of the eagles flew right over the, over the area and it was very impressive, so, for a lot of reasons, but that was one of them. Thank you.
Counselor Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. President. While everybody's thinking all of the, you know, talking, discussing BIF, I want to actually thank the, the community because they've embraced this, you know, this event. They brought swagger and panache to it that would otherwise be, be lacking and, and it's just become this, this great conglomerate of the, of the public and the organizers and the sponsors and just it's, it's becoming something that's tremendously vibrant and I would like to thank everybody for their portion of it.
Counselor Johns.
I don't have anything new to add. BIF was fantastic. I loved to see everybody showing up downtown. Bobby Coleman that I had the opportunity to meet from Snowman was absolutely adorable, very well-rounded. And it was just a great time. And want to recognize Ms. Christensen and her staff with the, the public housing and all of the work that your staff has put into that project, as well as the CDA. It has been an ongoing years that we've put into this. And it's still not done, but I just wanted to acknowledge that I know how much work has gone into that and I'm grateful for it. So, thanks.
Counselor Noonam.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank our credible professional staff, SWAT team, how incredible we have had an opportunity to see in Beloit what great services they offer to our community, but how exciting to have it here, recognize them in such a special way. And it brings great honor to our, our community. And so thank you all very much. I had an opportunity several years ago to participate in one of the practices you guys were doing and I was very impressed with how thorough and professional you handle yourselves. So thank you very much. Continued great success and, and safety. And then also, yeah, BIF, just what an incredible event this turns out to be every year. Six years into it now, people from all over the world come here. I met on Friday night, a filmmaker from Sweden and then there were, I can't remember all the different ones, I spent a lot of time talking to him, but I, I think there are four different countries that had directors that came through that I visited with, you know, and the excitement, their, their appreciation of Beloit and the festival, their interest in seeing how it grows. They, each one seemed to mention that what was unique about Beloit was that it was about the filmmakers and the films. And they took a lot from that and appreciated that. So I wish them great success and thank all the volunteers and congratulate the community. Great for that.
Thank you. And I would just like to say that's three great positive things that we had tonight for, again, for the city of Beloit, the recognition of the SWAT team, the public housing development in BIF. I think as we move forward, I think we need to continue to push that, the positive things that's going on in this great city because truly, people outside the community, a lot of times, see it a lot more than the people that's inside the community. So I think we need to start tooting our own horn and letting other people know how great we really are and, you know, a little community like Beloit, as people often say, we do great things. So I'm proud to, as I always say, be a citizen of this great city and we continue to do great and amazing things. So hats off to the staff, the citizens, and just everyone in general for a job well done. Item ten, city manager's present, presentation. Beth, you have anything this evening?
No.
Okay. Item eleven, a report from boards and city officers.
Resolution adopting the Rock County Hazard Mitigation Plan updated September twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen.
Mr. Box, please.
This is a resolution to adopt this plan that's developed by Rock County. The purpose of the plan is to give some outlines on how to deal to mitigate potential hazards in the community and the county. The plan is required in order to get federal emergency funding if a, an event happens in your community. So this is this update to that plan. What it suggests is that each community look at things within the community that they could do in order to mitigate any potential hazards that could be caused by something and to try to make the, the community safer. As an example, what we have done in the downtown area as a result of the two thousand eight floods was to try to look at things we could do in order to mitigate that from happening in the future. And part of that was raising up Sherlin Avenue. So that way, that street won't be shut down during a flooding event, as well as the redevelopment of the Mill Street, Water Street area. Those streets were raised up, helps mitigate that area. Also, the shoring, what's going on now along the riprap along the riverbank is repairs made using that funding that we got from the feds to help correct that. There are a couple of other items that we're going to be continuing to look at to alleviate any type of flooding activity that could affect the downtown area. But without having a plan in place, we would not have been eligible to get federal funding to do those projects. So that's the purpose of this plan and it's just a basis that's used to basically try to get communities to look at things they could do to help alleviate any damage in the future.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
We approve, Mr. President.
Motion by Vander Bogart, second by Noonam. Counselor DeForest.
Do you have a, excuse me, a question, Mr. Box? Were there any recommendations that came out of the plan specific to this, how this body could support mitigation services in terms of staffing or in terms of equipment that we should have in place in our city and in our county to help mitigate some of these natural hazards?
They don't specifically try to come up with things that the communities should do, you know, in particular, they just recommend that if you have things that, improvements that you can make to make your public safer. That's what they recommend that you, you know, move forward and do, rather than, you know, create a document that, you know, gives details on things that, you know, each community should do. They didn't do that on this.
Well, if I guess if I could follow up, I'm assuming that there was a lot of participation from some of our, our frontline responders in terms of, you know, practical terms of responding and mitigating natural disasters. Was there anything that they shared that they felt were gaps in terms of our ability to respond in a way that was effective?
I would guess that if parts of the organization have things they need to improve on in order to better respond to any disasters, that'd be our responsibility to, you know, mitigate that ourselves. All the county's doing is basically indicating that if you've identified things in your community that you think you need to improve, you know, that you should do that. That'd be the responsibility of the individual community. So the plan is just encouraging everybody to look at the things that could, you know, cause disasters, type outcomes in your community and try to mitigate those.
Right. I guess that's why I'm asking them, because the plan forces an assessment of where we're at, was there any sense that we had that there were things that we needed to plug in or gaps that we needed to address? You know, for example, I noticed that the, the number one ranked natural disaster in terms of vulnerability for us was tornadoes. Has a sense come from our local fire and police and DPW departments that we have enough resources to address that type of natural disaster?
Well, I guess what we would do if, you know, we're trying to, where to come through town is to use the resources we have available to us to try to deal with it as best as possible. This plan isn't going to recommend that you do anything, you know, any expanding of resources. It's just suggesting that you make plans and part of that plans in that case would be, Rock County has been installing and updating their emergency warning systems. be, Rock County has been installing and updating their emergency warning systems. You know, so, they had done that in order to try to, you know, better prepare the community for that type of a disaster. As far as actually responding to an event, you know, that would be up to the individual departments to do it the best that they have ability at the time.
I guess I'm looking for more specifics. Maybe I should, who should I follow up with to, to get more specifics about? Like, for example, when I was reading the, the memo or the minutes from the emergency management, the Rock County Emergency Management Team, there was discussion there about the need to develop a mass evacuation plan and there's some other recommendations there about things that needed to occur. And I'm just wondering if we're moving forward on those things or the resources that we as a body need to help dedicate to make those things possible?
I think if, like, for example, the city of Beloit, if we felt that was necessary, we would bring that forward during budget times to ask for resources in order to do those things. As far as, you know, looking for other planning exercises, I know like Rock County, the city of Jamesville is looking at a, at an evacuation plan for the community and how to better use the interstate system, which we got involved with that. So, there's planning going on out there to have, you know, try to determine the best way to deal with situations. But as far as, you know, asking for resources from the council to support would be probably best handled during a budget presentation.
All right. Thank you.
Any other?
No, thank you.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any none, passes seven, zero. Item 11B, please.
A resolution approving the 2011 Clubhouse Food and Beverage Operating Agreement for Kruger Haskell Municipal Golf Course.
Mr. Box, please.
Before you use a resolution to support this agreement, we've come up with for our vendor to operate a food concession business at our golf course. They've been operating there now for two years and this agreement offers the opportunity to extend that for another three years. We believe, we spent a lot of time with the vendor to review this agreement and come up with a, ideas how to put down in writing things that we need to address on both sides. We believe this is a, a good agreement from the point of both parties did sit down and go through and try to address the issues that they had with the agreement. What this does is reduce the payment from the vendor to a point where depending on the rounds of golf we have played at the golf course. So, if the golf play is down this year, the vendor will be responsible for less than what he would have normally had to pay. But if the play is up, then he'll have to pay more to a maximum of $16,000, which this agreement is for $14,000 to lease the space to operate his business in for that season.
Okay.
We believe this is a good agreement and we'd like to offer, have the council support it.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Haynes, second by Johns. Counselor DeForest.
Yes, thank you. I, so as I understand it, as you said, this, this agreement allows for forgiveness up to 12%, which equals about $2,000 if the rounds are down. But as I, as I understand the contract, that is related to the, at the tail end of the season and I was wondering about the impact of construction on the golf course and, and if you have a, an estimated timeline of when the golf course will be able to have resumed play as normal and the potential impact on this vendor, given the possibility for reduced play.
Well, our current contract with our, on the golf course is intended to be completed on, by April 1st. There are some penalties in the contract for not having completion at that time. It's all dependent on the, the spring growing season. If the grass isn't growing, then obviously it's not going to be fully playable for a period of time. There's one hole that probably won't be playable until late in the season, but it doesn't mean to be, you know, as far as the golf operation, we would make arrangements to have a temporary hole out there. We're, we, we are also concerned about how this is going to affect the amount of play we have at the golf course. We reflected that in our estimates of, we reduced our season pass rates in order to encourage more people to play. And that's why we put this amendment into this agreement so that the payment for the rental of the space would be reduced and be based on the rounds of golf played.
In your discussions with the vendor, was, was there discussion at all about reducing the monthly fee early in the season when construction might impact the level of play? I'm just asking this because we have a quality vendor there. We haven't always had success in, in keeping a quality food vendor there at the clubhouse and based on the, the cus, the customer surveys that we received, they received excellent feedback. So, I'm just concerned about trying to help that business owner be able to maintain space in that clubhouse and be successful. I mean, is there any ability to make concessions if there is reduced play and they're not able to meet sales in a way to break even?
Well, I believe we've done that by reducing the fee $2,000 for the rental of the space.
Do you think that's sufficient then? And that was the vendor's opinion as well?
Well, I believe he agreed to that when we put this agreement together. Do you have another suggestion?
I'd like to see reduced monthly fees early in the season, particularly the first three months of the season since construction will likely impact the level of play at the course.
And then make them up later in the season.
Well, I guess I'd like to see some concession that, that fees are based on sales.
I guess it's your right to make that suggestion. I don't think it, I think we reduced the price $2,000 of the rent of the facility.
So, are you saying then that you don't think it's feasible to revisit that?
No.
The concession? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Box, just a point of clarification. So, when you put this agreement together and sat down with the, the vendor, was all this shared with the vendor at that particular time?
I believe so. This has been under discussion since December.
Okay. And the vendor was in agreement with everything that's in this contract right now?
We believe so. Otherwise, we wouldn't have brought it forward at this time.
Okay. So, you already had a conversation with them and so, they understood the construction and everything else that we, that Counselor DeForest brought tonight?
I believe so.
And they were in agreement with the $2,000?
I believe so.
Okay. Any other Counselor DeForest?
Sorry. I was informed by the vendor that they weren't aware that the construction would take longer than anticipated when they, when they agreed to this contract. My understanding was that this vendor agreed to this contract based on the assumption that construction would be completed by a certain time, which is why I'm, I'm asking to revisit, revisit the contract.
So, you have a question?
I, I'm asking if there could be consideration for sitting down again with the vendor and making the contract more flexible to increase our chances of being able to make it in this space from a, a business sense.
Let me jump in here and, and say this and I, trust me, I don't mean it in a negative or harmful way in any way, but I, I, my personal feeling here is if there's a discrepancy with the agreement or a question concerning the agreement, then I, I truly would hope that the vendor, we have a good working relationship with him, that he would go back to Mr. Box or the city and say, hey, here's something that I think is inconsistent. I think, you know, the construction season may be running a little longer than what you guys have said. Hey, can we reopen up this agreement? Can we look at it again before you take it to council? Let's sit down and try to work it out now because I don't, I see some inconsistencies. And I, I guess that that would be my hope, that, that vendor, that the vendor would do that before it gets down to where we are now because I, I think there probably would have been ample time for the vendor to go back and have that conversation with Mr. Box. And I truly believe that, you know, he's a good vendor there. I'm not taking that away from him, but I think that if, if definitely if the vendor was feeling that way, then I wish that conversation would have taken place prior to it getting here, pretty much in the 11th hour. And now, if we go back, that's going to slow things down again. But I think I, I, that's just, that's just me speaking and I think that staff would appreciate that as well, that if there were problems in the agreement or foreseeing problems in the agreement, that we come back to the table and say, I think we need to reopen this or take another look at it or take a second look at it because things are not progressing the way that they should, we need to look at something a little bit different. With that said, there is a motion on the table. Counselor DeForest.
So, would it be unreasonable to request that a condition be added to the contract that if the sales do not meet a certain threshold or if the construction season extends beyond when anticipated, that the terms of the contract could be revisited? Or as another option, I don't know how timely this is, can this be laid over till our next meeting to allow the vendor an opportunity to discuss the contract, the terms of the contract again? Those are the two options I'd like to put out on the table.
I guess at this, Counselor Johns.
I guess, you know, I, I appreciate where Counselor DeForest is coming from in, in wanting to protect the, the Quinn's interest in this. However, I guess I see this, that they are running a business here and I don't see that it's our job to negotiate on their behalf. I see it more as our job to negotiate on the city's behalf. So, I just, I understand the importance of having a good vendor in there, but I guess that's my answer.
Thank you. I guess at this particular moment with the comments that's been shared and with my statement in particular that if there was a discrepancy, I would, I would hope that they would go to the city before it gets down here to Counselor John's point that we're here, you know, negotiating on behalf of the city, that I think at this particular moment, there is a motion and a second on the floor that I'm inclined to call for the vote at this time. And those that are not in favor of the agreement, then you have that opportunity to vote, not in favor of it, I guess. But at this time, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of approving this agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to one. Item 11C.
A resolution accepting Pat Cassidy's offer to purchase lots 257 and 258 of the Poth's Fourth Sun Valley in the city of Beloit.
Mrs. Christensen, please.
In 2004, Woodmans donated the land located on Burton Avenue, or Burton Street, just north of the Woodmans Grocery Store to the city. Past two years, Silverstone came forward and submitted an offer to purchase to try to do tax credit development there. They were denied tax credits each time. The owner of 2238 Staborn, and there is a location map in here somewhere, which you can see there on the corner of Staborn and Fur Drive, has expressed interest in purchasing the land behind their residence and they approached the city in the fall of 2010. They did submit an offer to purchase for $2,400. My understanding is they're really just proposing to allow this to expand their yard space and have a buffer between that and whatever development would occur. When Silverstone did come forward, they actually never did want that piece of land. It wasn't actually part of that proposed development. We think this would be a good sale. We don't have any proposed future use for this land. It would square it off. As you can see, there are some lots owned by other people in there and it would leave us with a more rectangular shaped, which would be more conducive to development. So, staff is recommending approval of the sale of lots 257 and 258 to Pat Cassidy for $2,400.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by DeForest, second by Haynes. Counselor, discussion, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven, zero. Item 11D, please.
A resolution approving amendments to the city of Beloit Housing Loan Procedure Manual and Program.
Mrs. Christensen, please.
This is, was laid out from, from last time, but I will briefly go through why we brought this forward. HUD came and monitored our housing rehab loan program in May of last year and they required us to add specific language about qualifications of contractors, environmental review, architectural and lead-based paint requirements. And then we, on our own, decided that we would really like to increase the amount allowed for the distressed property loan program, which is really an emergency loan program, and also change the language to not require everything to be brought up to code because it is an emergency. The question that came up at your last meeting related to the qualifications of contractors and a section which said that the contractors may be disqualified if any of the following, for any of the following issues, and it was owed, property and income taxes, child support or convictions on citations from housing services could disqualify a contractor. We have modified that slightly to take out the income taxes and child support. Mostly, we took that out because it would be impossible for us or very expensive for us to keep track of that. But we, it is not a requirement of HUD, but we do feel that if you're going to get federal dollars, federal government dollars, that you should be paid up on all that you owe and that that is an important thing, which is why we put it in there. We did kind of steal it from RSCEN. They have all that language in there, but it is not a HUD requirement. I mean, our focus is on providing loans for property owners, not on providing money for contractors. So, we're trying to provide our property owners good contractors and we believe a good contractor should pay his or her bills. So, I mean, that's why we put the language in there. You can take it out, do what you will with it. But that's really what we, what we did with that portion. And so, that was, Counselor DeForest asked me to look into that. And so, it's not a HUD requirement, so you can do what you will with it. But that's staff's viewpoint on it. And I don't know how often the property taxes, we feel they should be current with city of Beloit property taxes and that they should not have, we have convictions on citations so that it's not just that they got issued a ticket, but that they actually went to court and, you know, they were proved that they had violated the code. So, we feel they should be following our codes and paying our taxes. So, I mean, that was what we lightened it to be because we feel those were important at a minimum.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
We approve.
Motion by Haynes, is there a second? Second by Johns. Counselor, discussion. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Ms. Christensen, so, and make prep for Mr. Haynes and Ms. Johns, does the motion include the provision then for up-to-date child support and up-to-date taxes? Or has that been taken out?
So, we did, I don't know what page it is on your packet, so.
So, so that has been removed?
So, what it says is outstanding property taxes or convictions on citations from housing services could disqualify a contractor.
Okay. So, we've removed that other language?
That's it.
Okay. That was my concern was that if, if that language remained and we then approved someone without checking, does that leave us open to liability of some sort? And the Byzantine world of whether you do or don't owe child support is, is, you can spend hours and hours and still not get anywhere.
And, and we didn't have a good way to track the income taxes either.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, if I'm reading this correctly, so, this is, we're in section five. And so, the one prior to that, the point, so if they have had a bankruptcy at any point in, in their life, then they, they would not qualify?
Related to contracting?
Anybody else? Now, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none, passes seven, zero.
Hearing none, passes seven zero. Item eleven E, please.
A resolution to adopt the Section Three Plan to Comply with 24 CFR Part 135 of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, Section Three.
Ms. Christiansen?
As part of our NSP III application, we were required to have a council-approved Section Three policy. Section Three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968, as amended, requires grantees that receive federal funding for construction projects to ensure that employment and other economic and business opportunities generated by HUD financial assistance are offered to public housing residents, low-income persons, and businesses that provide economic opportunities to low and very low-income persons. This is an act that applies to our CBG funds, NSP funds, and Community Development Block Grant Funds, Neighborhood Stabilization Program Funds, and public housing, Lloyd Housing Authority Funds. And at this point, they mandated a policy approved by council. So Section Three is a regulation we're required to follow, but this particular application required you guys to review it. We've worked with, we are collaborating with the city of Janesville on our Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant, and so we worked with Janesville to standardize our forms or procedures and have them be comparable, so that if we have contractors working in both communities, we weren't hitting them with different ways of handling this regulation. In a nutshell, what it is, is if a city receives more than $200,000 in these funds, we are required to report on Section Three. If a contractor receives more than $100,000 in dollars through the program, an individual contract, any employees he hires, he has to basically post a notice to public housing residents, Section Eight residents, and other low-income people in locations we indicate in this plan that there are jobs available. They still have to be qualified for them, but if they are equally qualified to someone in Janesville, they have to select our people first. It's local, local people first, local qualified people first, and specifically, local low-income people first, and trying to give those jobs to them. And so it doesn't require them to create new jobs, but if they do, if they have a position open, they have to make that available, or notify the low-income people in our community to try to give them kind of a greater chance to get that job. And then there's just a, you know, it's, there's a whole procedure for how we can actually certify businesses as Section Three, which we think, we do have a number of, especially in the rehab program side, a number of contractors who are going to just be low-income, because they're really pretty small companies, and that will help us meet our Section Three threshold as well. But essentially, this is a HUD requirement. We've put in place a procedure for how we would handle it, like where we post stuff, how we notify the public is up to us, and how we notify low-income people. But this is a policy that we must have per HUD as part of the funding that we receive as a city.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Motion by Nunez, is there a second? Second by Johns, any council discussion? Councilor DeForest?
I do have a question. Is this the first time that we've had a Section Three plan?
It's the first time we've been required to have one.
Okay, so in the past, we haven't?
What has happened in the past is that HUD essentially said, follow the regulations, and we've never had to, we've never had a contractor that got $100,000. And so, but what's happening with some of the projects we're doing with NSP, there's a potential, and NSP actually requires there to be a plan. And the trend in HUD that we're finding in the last year, coming out of headquarters, is that they don't want you to just say, there's the rag and we're following it. They actually want you to have a written policy for everything. And so that's, we've always done that with CDA, with housing authority business. That's what HUD has always required of housing authorities, but the new trend is to require those written policies as part of CBG and NSP. And so we essentially, the rule generally didn't, the housing authorities always followed it. But on the city's side, because it was CBG dollars and we never had more than $100,000 going to a contractor, we never had that requirement. With NSP, there's a potential, because they are, we're, you know, doing major rehab projects, not just a minor homeowner improvement. So there is the potential for a contractor to get a $100,000 contract between the city of Lloyd and Janesville.
How does this interface with our existing procurement policy in terms of trying to recruit minority women business enterprises? Are they together?
They're separate.
Okay. So the goal, the goal requirements for that are separate from this plan's? Okay.
Yeah, there's, HUD looks at all of those, there's Davis Bacon requirements, there's, I mean, they all kind of overlap each other, just like with the tax credits. Then there's the workforce utilization, and there's the, all that EBE stuff. And they all kind of overlap each other, but they're all separate things, we have to report separately.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I believe there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero.
A resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
Mr. York, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Purpose of this resolution, in order to comply with IRS regulations relating to tax-exempt debt, is any projects that we have scheduled for bond financing, any costs that we incur prior to the issuance of that debt, we have to declare our intent to reimburse ourselves for any funds that we have advanced, for any expenses from the bond proceeds. And that's really all this resolution is doing, is making that official declaration and to comply with IRS regulations. And the projects listed here are those that are included in the CIP for 2011 and the budget for this year, with the exception of the one project that you issued a contract on last week, and that was the State Street Reconstruction Project, which was actually included in the 2010 CIP, but we didn't include that project in our financing plan for last year. So with that, I'll be certainly glad to answer any questions any council members may have.
Is there a motion? Motion by Haynes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vanda Bogart. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. Item 12, motion to adjourn.
I will adjourn.
Motion by DeForest. Second by Johns. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Wow. Okay. Again. Okay.